Good afternoon. We welcome you to the first county commissioners meeting in October. We're glad that everyone is here. We're going to start this meeting as we start all of our meetings with a solemnizing prayer from Michael Taylor, Jr. And he'll deliver that. And then we'll have, after that, we'll have our pledge. So Mr. Taylor, if you would, if you present our prayer, our solemnizing prayer.
Can you hear me, gentlemen?
Yes.
Okay. Dear and Father, Lord, we come to you today, Lord. We just thank you for our commissioners. God do just ask you to give them wisdom and strength in their daily lives, Lord, and in their day-to-day jobs, Lord, that you'll just be with them as they make these decisions for our county. We thank you for them, Lord. We thank you for what you're going to do the rest of this year. We ask you just to give us the strength that we need as a county to grow in you. And just again, we thank you for everything that you've done for us, Lord. Again, give them wisdom, give them strength. In our name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, commissioners, we will consider additions to the agenda. Mr. Chairman, I would like to add to the consent agenda, the document that I gave to each one of the commissioners requesting a motion to authorize the manager to negotiate a contract with ADW to design and administer construction for Rowan Transit out at the West End Plaza. That was made in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioners. Oh, yeah. We'll, we will add that Carolyn is item number Z.
You want?
Do you want me to repeat your motion there?
Can you hear me now, Connie? Okay. The motion was is to authorize the manager to negotiate a contract with ADW to design and administer construction for Rowan Transit's office space out at the West End Plaza.
We're going to move them from the old decrepit building that they're in now, Connie, and move them out to the West End Plaza and just have an architect go ahead and draw the plans on it because there's some things with the ceiling and the back that are going to be pretty technical.
All the items?
Yeah, we're going to pull item U. And to add that to the regular. To the regular agenda. And we'll go ahead and just call that, let's say 3A. Is that all right? Just get that out of the way. And Jay, this has to do with the retirement and the new employment of tax collector. And can we talk about that and Carolyn's position in the same, at the same time? Advertising of both of them?
Yeah, we can talk about the advertising for those positions.
Yes, that's all we want to talk about.
All right.
We'll do that.
For the agenda, then, it's item 3A is to discuss advertising for the tax collector and the position of county clerk.
That's correct. Got that one done? All right. We have now have the additions and now we.
A move approval of the agenda is amended.
Say aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, we'll consider deletions of the agenda. Deletion. Hearing none, I ask for a motion or consider deletions. All of, since there's none, I don't guess we had to vote on it, do we? Consider, I guess we do. All right. Then we'll consider approval of the total agenda. I make a motion to consider approval of the minutes September 19th. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. And I make a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll move down to the regular agenda at this point. And. Yes. At this time, I'd like to talk about the resolution supporting the open green light. And I'd like to call on Commissioner Kasky, if he would, to read this resolution.
All right, thank you. I'll make this in the form of a motion. Resolution supporting Operation Green Light for veterans. Whereas the residents of Rowan County have great respect, admiration, and utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our community and this community in the armed forces. Whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining their freedom and way of life and joy by our citizens. Whereas Rowan County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign war, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service offices, officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal healthcare disability and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, and a missed estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas, studies indicate that 44 to 72% of service members experience high level of stress during transition from military civilian life. And whereas, active military service members transitioning from military services are at a high risk of suicide during the first year after military service. And whereas, the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for Veterans. And whereas, the Rowan County Board of Commissions appreciates the sacrifice of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be accorded to them. Now therefore be resolved that the Rowan County Board of Commissions with designation as a Green Light for Veterans County hereby declare the week of November 7th, 2022 through November 13th, 2022, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. And be it further resolved that in observation of Operation Green Light, the Rowan County Board of Commissioners encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who have immeasurable sacrifice to preserve freedom and display a green light in a window of their place of business or residence. This is the third day of October, 2022.
Second. This is made in the form of a motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Our motion carries. I'm happy to announce that Rowan County has taken steps to participate in the nationwide effort to display a green light to show appreciation to our veterans for their sacrifices. The county has installed a green light at the majority of our county buildings for the designated timeframe. I would like to take this opportunity to encourage our citizens to also participate by displaying a green light at your residence or place of business. I don't have any public comment up here. This time, I'd like to call on Scott Shelton, Vice President of Rowan County. Oh, we did add 3A. Scott, you're going to have to wait a second. I forgot to read my own notes here. At this time, we have two job openings that are coming up this year with retirements. And at this point in time, we'd like to talk about how they were going to be advertised.
I was going to say real quick, for people maybe watching at home, that these are positions that are actually appointed by the commissioners. So this is something out of the ordinary. That's why we're talking about it here. These aren't, through the normal process, there's, I think, five, four or five people that the commission actually will hire themselves. And so that's, that's what this is about. But the only, the only thing that I had taught, Mr. Pierce, and I talked to you earlier, Greg, was the, for the tax collector, I guess inadvertently they put an internal only on the listing. And I just think we should edit that so, you know, we can have external applicants apply.
And the, the other is Carolyn's position. And I think that we ought to open that up and, and let the public know that that position is available and that you're going to be retiring and that we need to advertise it and go through the normal process after that.
Should we also put in a caveat that we would like HR to be the one to put the application out and all applications go to them for screening and then come to the commissioners?
That's fine. I would like to see, you know, I mean, obviously if there's, I don't know how to do it, but there's 10,000 applications, I don't know if we can look through them all, but I would like to know.
What qualifications they need to have?
Which ones they didn't send us, I guess.
You need that in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor.
Motion was to let, to open it up for, not to have it just strictly in-house, to open it up to the public for application period, and that HR be the one to collect and put together the application to offer up the candidates to the commissioners after they've vetted.
Well, also let me bring up another thing is that, obviously, we can use HR to facilitate it for us. But since this is a board appointment, obviously, if we see other ones that aren't applied that we would also like to discuss, then we have that ability as board members.
Look at all applications.
If that's legal, Jay, I guess. I mean, if you use HR, do you have to only use ones that come from HR? We all have the ability to.
I would assume that the commissioners would have the ability to look at all applications.
Yeah. Yeah, I think typically what they would do is they would compile the list of candidates and they would create sort of a target list. Kelly's here. But they would create a target list of who they deemed to be the top prospects based on certain qualifications, but you would have access to all of the applications. However, you wish to proceed with how much you want to review. That fair, Kelly? No, you won't. I just said you would create sort of a top list, but.
I'm thinking as I can get a shared title.
Okay. Well, we were going off the boilerplate that we used when we hired the county manager, which was HR collected the applications. They had certain criteria that had to be met, and we did those folks out. And then they made a recommendation of the top four. Now, we don't have to have the recommendation because there was a lot more people applying for county manager's job than probably going to be for tax collector. But, but I would like for your staff to be the one to put together what you feel like we need to have as qualifications so that we, you know, I don't want you to have 5,000 applications. That's not my point. I'm just saying, y'all are more qualified to figure out from other counties what they require for the tax collection and put that together. And then when people want to apply, this is the format that they go by.
Correct. And I would encourage you, if you're going to be yourselves as board members, to ask them to use the automated application process. That's really the only way I'll be able to collect them all for you in one place.
I don't think that'll be a problem. Thank you, Kelly.
Perfect.
All right, has our motion changed?
I don't think so.
We good? All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Say aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Start the process. Scott, we welcome you now to come and talk to us about the EDC project finishing.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Green. Thank you, board members, for hearing this second request for project finishing. The board might recall back in August, you approved an incentive request for project finishing. But again, some things have changed and they've asked us to come back to the board. But just to kind of go through the project real briefly for those who weren't here the first time, this is a manufacturer based in the Northeast, been around for decades. They are looking to relocate down south and they are considering a building in Rowan County for this. And if they were to pick Rowan County, they'd create 29 new jobs over the next three years and invest about $7 million in building renovations and new equipment. And they perceive most of this being done by the end of 2023. Again, I mentioned the prior action by the board, but back in August, you approved a Level One grant for the project, which is of course a grant equivalent to 75% of the new taxes paid on the project, only paid out over five installments, and that was estimated to be about $125,000. In regards to the new request, the company had requested an allocation or an appropriation from the General Assembly to help facilitate their move to North Carolina. The company was told these funds would be included in the state budget. Not sure what quite happened, but there was a mix-up and the funds were not allocated. If they were allocated, the state was going to give the money to the county to disperse to the company in a lump sum payment. But the company is saying that receiving these funds in a lump sum payment is a key component of their move to North Carolina. So what they're now asking is for the board to rescind the original Level One grant that was approved back in August and instead award them some money, about $165,000 from the Economic Development Funds. I guess that's the tax that is charged for things like, you know, getting your car repaired, stuff like that. And it has to go to either education or economic development. That's the funds that the company is asking the board to consider paying them a one-time lump sum appropriation of $165,000. Now, this incentive would be structured as a forgivable loan. It would be forgiven if job creation goals are met. And again, that is the request from the company. So what we're asking for the board to consider is rescinding the original Level One grant approved on August 1st and award a lump sum payment in amount of $165,000 from the county's Economic Development Funds to project finishing. And to close, just to kind of go back to the original parameters of the project, it's a $6.85 million investment in Rowan County, 29 new jobs over three years. And the, we forecast the net in property tax revenue to the county to be about $203,000. Again, another opportunity to expand the county's manufacturing base. That's the basics of the request from the company. Be glad to answer any questions.
Scott, I'd always like to ask you and put you on the spot. I haven't asked you before, but do you know about the average income of these 29 jobs?
It's our understanding it'd be an average that would exceed $70,000 a year. And this, it would be a machinery manufacturing operation.
Scott, are they looking to using the existing building or are they looking to build new?
This would be existing. They, it's our understanding they're considering the currently vacant Thermoid Building in Salisbury for this project. And as far as the jobs and stuff.
Say that again, I didn't hear that.
It's my, my understanding that they are considering the former Thermoid Building off of MLK in Salisbury of this project. They actually have a request tonight with Salisbury City Council to apply for a building reuse grant on the company's behalf to rehab that building. And just so the board knows, as far as the 29 jobs, they vary from everything from machinists to welders all the way up to, you know, controllers and engineers. So it's a nice mix of jobs, blue collar to white collar.
Questions, Mike, you got it? At, at this time, I'm going to open a public hearing to receive input from citizens. There's anyone that has any questions about this? April, if you've got anybody online, let us know.
I'd like to invite our remote participants, anyone wishing to speak. If you use the raise your hand feature, we'll acknowledge you.
All right, April.
Mr. Chairman, I don't see anyone wishing to speak.
Well, at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing. And do I have a motion to approve the revised incentive for project finishing as requested?
No move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. God, thank you for coming tonight.
One more thing, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if it's necessary or not, but we did ask also for the board to rescind the original Level One grant for, for the project.
Make a motion to rescind the original grant.
Second.
Second. I'll make a point real quick now. Go ahead.
What?
No, I was just going to say that, so these funds are actually, these are state funds that we're spending. They just come to us a different way through the sales tax. So actually, we're saving property tax, sales, property tax taxes using state money. So it's actually, if citizens ask, it's actually better for the county because we're using state funds instead of the property tax. It looks like we're kind of giving them some money, but it's actually coming from the state already.
Yeah, it's still coming from the state even though.
It's just funded through us, yeah.
Thought it was going to come. But we are not spending property tax money. All right, so we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, you satisfied? All right, good. Go on now. All right, at this point in time, we're going to have a public hearing on road name changes.
Quite a few name changes for this meeting. I just wanted to start by saying, a lot of these have been mandated by a change in the ordinance, campgrounds now, it's in the ordinance, addressing ordinance that they, all campsites have to have a numeric address as well as a unique road name. So that's where a lot of these are going to be coming from. Also had three kind of private requests. Everybody that I'm presenting today has had the same process. They've been given the petition either at their request or our request, and they've been sent out letters. We've had the names approved by 911 and we posted for this hearing as well, letters as well as signs. So if it's okay with you guys, we'll just put them all together?
Yes, it is absolutely okay.
So the first request is actually a campground.
Pamela, would you wait one second? I did not take a chance to welcome you here. This is Pamela Ew with Rowan County Planning Technician.
Thank you. First one is off of Roy Miller Loop Road. And there's actually three roads in there, and I've highlighted them up on the map in the purple, the orange, and the yellow. Two of the names were submitted by the owner of the land. We tried several times, we couldn't get that last one, so we named one of them. So Veterinary Lane, Angler Way, and Mosquito Circle are the three that are up. And Angler Way would be the one that we submit. Moving on to the next one, it's going to be. Another campground. This one is going to be off of Scout Road, Dutchman's Point. There's one little piece right here that needs a name to make it where we can find everybody in case of emergency. They did not submit a name, but we came up with Restful Way. So that's what we're going to submit today for the name change that's been approved through 911. The next one has the same owners, it's just across the way off of Bringle Ferry. Proposed name, again, it's a campground, proposed name is going to be Relaxation Lane. And that's going to be this little yellow piece right here. Again, that was staff submitted. Fourth one is a private request. This driveway was previously, it's off of Mount Hope Church Road, and it was previously named for the owner at that time. It was Clutz Lake Drive, they had named it. They have since sold that land and it's been bought by the Hawkins family and they're requesting a name change, Hawkins Holler Drive. This is one that they're requesting, so therefore they are, you know, paying for the road sign and everything like that. They've submitted all that. And their name has been okayed.
That fifth one.
Another private driveway off of Stokes Ferry Road. The owners of these parcels want to rename it. There are two addresses on there with third one coming, which will make it mandatory for it to be named, excuse me. And the name that they submitted that was okayed is Willow Farm Lane. Or that little yellow segment's where it goes. Next is also another private request, same situation. We've got a couple of them already with more coming. And the name submitted for this is Old Roblin Farm Road. That was submitted by the petitioners. Two more campgrounds and I'll be done. This campground, this road is located off Pops River Road of St. Matthews. There is one little piece right here, the yellow, that needs to be named. And the name that staff submitted was. And the name that staff submitted was Crappy Gig Lane. As in the fish. Last one, I believe, is just right down the road off St. Matthews. There are two roads, in the purple and the yellow, that need to be named. This was submitted by the owner. Church Bells Way and Omega Point are the two names that they have requested. Questions?
Was it Church Bell and what?
It was Church Bells Way and Omega Point. Omega like Alpha and Omega.
All right. Listen. All right. At this point, I'll open a public hearing to receive comments from anyone wishing to address the board regarding the proposed road names that have been presented. Buddy here? April, you got anybody?
No, Mr. Chairman, no one is wishing to speak.
All right, if there's no one else, I'll hereby close the public hearing. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the eight. Now, we're going to have to pick from these two that you gave us here.
There was two roads.
Those two different roads there, Church Bells and Omega.
There's actually eight different parcels with 11 different roads.
Okay. All right. All right, then if we're good with these, I'll entertain a motion to approve the eight road.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, at this point in time, our planning board director, Ed Muir, will present a temporary use permit request from Mike Miller for the Miller Family Farm.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board Member. So this is a request from Mike Miller for a temporary use permit for operation of a vortex on his family's farm during their annual Maze of Terror event. The Miller family has about 500 acres west off Miller Road that they farm, where it's part of their family farm. This particular tract is 160 acre parcel. Not all of it's used for the Maze of Terror, but this is where the temporary use permit application is applied for. And it's just south off of Weaver Road, adjacent to some of the Weaver family's residences. We deem this a non-farm use on a farm piece of property. In keeping with that, or I guess consistent with that, we would say that the Department of Labor views it the same. They do an inspection on the attraction annually. Mr. Miller has received approval from them in the past. His current application with them will expire on the 8th of this month and his insurance on that particular certificate will expire about the same time. We'll talk a little bit about that in terms of our findings. But nonetheless, just wanted to inform you how we view that. And that's why we're here as part of this event. So we'd want to talk a little bit about the criteria that the board needs to find. The first is the use will not endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare as a condition or requirement. Staff would suggest that Mr. Miller present his certificate of insurance, the updated certificate of insurance, provide a copy of the Department of Labor inspection, and finalize the remaining items with the building inspections office. He's had Mr. O'Kelly out there to inspect the site. He's got some very minor items that I think he's going to address today or tomorrow. So we would tell the board that, in our opinion, he satisfies that first criteria. The second one is the use will not have a substantial negative impact on adjoining properties. This is contained on that 160 acre parcel. It's several hundred feet or yards from the nearest residence. We did send notice to adjoining property owners to give them the opportunity to come and voice any concerns. This is not a public hearing, but based on prior temporary uses, we like to give folks the opportunity to come and address the board if they've got a problem. And then the third, the use will be approved for a specific period of time, not to exceed two years. In this particular case, since it is on the family farm and he's had this occurring in the past, staff would recommend that the approval be granted for September 30th through October 31st of this year and September 29th through October 31st of 2023. I would note that this is generally held on Friday and Saturday nights only. Is that correct? One other thing you may be asking, and I'm sure if Commissioner Kluzman was here, she would ask, what in the world is a vortex? And so I think I might let Mr. Miller come up here and explain it to you. I've asked him several times and I've confused it enough myself that it might be worth him just telling us in our own words so we'll know what he has. So with that, I would let him come up here and answer any other questions you guys may have. Is that fair?
That's great.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Miller.
Thank y'all for letting me come today. Have y'all ever been through a vortex? Any of y'all? Anybody?
Maybe.
What it is, is a simulation more so. It's inside of a building to make it dark. Imagine walking through a piece of pipe, a piece of pipe that's spinning very slowly. It's got a bridge that you're actually walking on. The bridge does not move. The pipe is actually spinning very slowly with, it's got neon paint on it and black lights, they don't like to illuminate that neon paint. And it's more of a simulation. You feel like you're tipping over sideways when you're walking through it. But that's the vortex. I mean, I don't know how else to explain it, but you're walking on a solid bridge. The customer will walk through a solid bridge when they go through it. But that tube is actually spinning around the outside of you. And it makes you feel like you're turning, and it gets me every time I go through it. And I've been through it 100 times. But it's just another attraction that we would like to have on our.
How long is the tube?
30 foot, 30 foot.
I think Mike is our expert in vortex.
Yes. I wish y'all would go walk through one. Y'all more than welcome to come out.
Thank you for bringing to our Christmas party this year for the county.
All right. We'll start it up just before you. We're done in October.
I'm good. Anybody else got anything?
The only other thing I would say, and I don't know if anyone's here, but just allow, of course, you let Mr. Miller talk if there's any public that wants to address the board relative to this request. And then you'd just kind of go back and we'll talk about those findings and conditions one more time. And we would recommend that you grant him the temporary use permit for this year and next year.
Mr. Miller, do you have anything else you'd like to say?
No, I just hate that we're running out of time on the insurance stuff. They had sent me an email, I thought would have all this stuff wrapped up last year or last week. And they sent me an email saying that they were no longer taking any application or new policies because of a storm coming through. And then they didn't send me an email back this morning saying that we were good to go again now, so.
They can issue you a certificate of insurance pretty quickly.
It'll be done with that, yeah. It'll be through the insurance policy. And then the state won't come out and do their inspection until you have that certificate of insurance. So we should have all that wrapped up by Friday.
Okay. Good. Thank you for being with us. This is not a public hearing. And at this time, I'll open the floor to receive comments from anyone who wishes to speak on the matter. Okay? If not.
You want a motion?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to grant the temporary zero one dash 22 zoning permit.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Hope you have better weather in the coming days than we've had here recently. Our finance people here ready to give us any budget amendments?
They should be in your pocket.
Motion to accept budget amendments?
No move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, let's see. Consider approval of board appointments. Hold it here. Cleveland Community Volunteer Fire Department Fire Commissioners. Pat Pfeifer's term on the board expired September 30th, 2022, and he does not wish to be reappointed at this time. Arthur Brown has applied and if approved, Mr. Brown's term will expire September 30th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Dangerous Dog Appeals Board. Nina Dixon applied for reappointment. The term would be for three years and expire on October 31st, 2025. Second?
Say.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Funeral Crime Prevention Council. Aaron Moody applied to fill the remainder of a term for a general public seat. The term will expire June 30th, 2023, at which time Ms. Moody would be eligible for reappointment. Motion?
No move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carries. Local Emergency Planning Committee. Lisa Abrams applied to fill the vacant industry seat. We had to vote on these individually.
Okay.
nominate Lisa Abrams.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alyssa Strilix. Applied to fill a vacant media seat.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jessica Mogridge applied to fill a vacant seat for environmental health and transportation.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. I move the board entering to closed session in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 to consider approval of the minutes of the closed session held on September 19th, 2022. And in accordance with North Carolina General Assembly, Statute 143-318-1111, for attorney-client privilege regarding an airport, an airport lease. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries will start as soon as the room is clear.
Pushing to come out of closed session.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to adjourn.
To adjourn, second.
Favor. Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.